If we could stand up for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag. First item on the agenda is the Commissioner's Office request that the Board approve and execute the minutes in the meeting of December 2, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Hi.
Hi, motion approved. Okay, number two is going to be the financials with Heidi. Come on, Heidi.
He's a theme song.
They go top of the Alps, they got a little house, they've got Heidi.
My braids.
You're famous.
Financials today include revenue certifications for the Building Standards Assessment Fund and the County Water Systems Fund, appropriation transfer from the contingency fund to return appropriations to the Sheriff's Office for web check and other expenses reimbursed and deposited into the general fund, supplemental appropriations for the Public Assistance Fund, the Water Resources and Water District Funds, the Treasurers, Ownment Tax, and the Clerk of Courts Title Fund for year-end processing, as well as the Transportation Fund for the repayment of the 2014 payroll advance, cash transfers out of the general fund for OWD debt payments for the water tower and the county water treatment plant and the local match portion of reimbursement number two of the airport FAA grant three dash three-nine-zero-zero-five-four-one-seven-on-four. We have a purchase order for Lebanon Ford for the state bid purchase of a 2014 Ford K eight eight all-wheel-drive SUV vehicle for the Department of Emergency Services in the amount of $26,476.80, contract for Johnson Controls for the performance contracting project development agreement for the Department of Water Resources in the amount of $55,000. Payment to Keystone U.S. Management DVA Psycho Integrated Security for the purchase and installation of two video recording cameras for the Juggah County Safety Center in the amount of $15,872. And then we have two payments for Board of DD, the first one is the payment to Trunk Hall for the purchase of roofing materials for the Board of DD Administration and Adult Services Buildings in the amount of $306,445.92, and the second one is the payment to building technicians for the request number one for the Board of DD Administration and Adult Services Buildings roof replacement project in the amount of $227,520.
Okay, I will make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Hi.
Commissioner's still there.
Hi. Motion approved. Thank you, Heidi. Okay, number three is the Commissioner's Office requesting the Board approve and execute resolution number fourteen dash one-eight-zero authorizing an increase to the maximum limit for blanket purchase orders from fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand to accommodate the operational needs to county departments, offices, and agencies to the effect of January 1, 2015. Did you want to talk about this?
Yeah, this is just to save some administrative costs, the blanket PO limit has been at fifteen thousand for quite some time, and we have the ability, I think you could raise it up to fifty thousand if you like, we thought it was kind of an interim step, we'd at least get it up to twenty-five thousand, maybe save departments from having to cut as many blank POs.
Twenty-five, that's interesting.
So just, so give me an example of like where this would be used, Dave, how would this come along?
Well, county engineers say they're buying, you know, road materials, asphalt or gravel or something like that, this allows them to make multiple purchases from a vendor and put it on their, or vendors, and put it on that plane to PO. So what they have to do is they're making these, you know, five thousand here, five thousand there, they have to keep an eye on it, and when there's not enough there to make their next purchase, they gotta do a new one.
I see, I see.
So it's just gonna maybe reduce the number that they have to do.
Or maybe a car, too, sometimes.
Well, typically.
A truck or a vehicle?
Yeah, typically they're gonna do that on a special contract.
On a special contract?
A blanket is more for repetitive stuff like office supplies and things where you don't have to have an encumbrance for a specific purchase, single purchase, you're using it for multiple purchases of a similar type.
I see, okay. All right, if there's no other questions, then if we get a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that.
Commissioner's meeting.
Hi.
Commissioner's still there.
Hi, motion approved. Okay, number four is the Juggah County Airport Authority. Morning.
Morning, how's everybody?
Good, good.
Patty.
Everybody looks good, I love that blossom.
Thank you.
Here's my sweet Coca-Cola. Well, we're here for a few things today. First, we have our request number two for our current project that's under FAA, and we would like your acknowledgement that we are requesting from them payments on the grant of fifteen thousand, of that thirteen thousand was the FAA portion and fifteen hundred was the local match.
Okay. Okay, for number four, if we could do a read.
The Juggah County Airport Authority is requesting the Board acknowledge and approve reimbursement request number two for FAA Project 339-0054-0017-2014 in the amount of $15,000, $13,500 FAA portion and $1,500 local match.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Hi.
Commissioner's still there.
Hi, motion approved.
Next to our kind of housekeeping things for the end of the year, we have our federal financial form four-twenty-five, which actually covers parts of Project 1512, Project 1613, and a project that will be coming up if we approve, so, would be 1714, and they are basically just to let everybody know what has been spent on the projects, what has been closed out, it's just a year-end type form, and with that one, if you want to do four, five, and six together, the standard form two-seventy-one is another form that the FAA requires that is an outlay report again, and it covers all the other grants as well.
Okay. All right, so then if we want to, let's just go ahead and do five, six, and seven together.
Seven is a new grant.
Or, I'm sorry, five and six, I'm, yep.
All right. The Juggah County Airport Authority is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the federal financial report for Project KIB 339-0054-1512, 339-0054-1613, and 339-0054-1714 for the fiscal year-end grant totals. The Juggah County Airport Authority is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the outlay reports for Projects KIB 339-0054-1512, 339-0054-1613, and 339-0054-1714 for the fiscal year-end grant totals.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Hi.
Commissioner's still there.
Hi, motion approved.
And lastly here, we will be looking to take some grant funds in 2015, and we are filing for a pre-application, which gives the FAA an opportunity to look it over, see if it's something they want to qualify for, qualify us for, you know, we have been able to keep the airport pretty self-sustainable with the exception of these capital improvement projects, and without the federal assistance that we get from FAA and or ODOT, we could not keep up and make the corrections and/or replace the pavement, the things that need to do that are capital improvements, we just, we could not afford to do so, and the entitlements that come out to airports, the FAA has set up through an act of Congress entitlements of $150,000 a year to come out to the general aviation airports, and if we do not take those, then they are given to somebody else. So with, you know, Juggah County kind of being a.
How much is it?
Hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Okay.
We do have to match it, ten percent, so we, you know, we are on the book for about fifteen thousand, but if we don't take it, somebody else gets the money that the taxpayers in Juggah County have paid to the federal government, and I think that would be a crime. So, in this case, we have a paving project that we're gonna be working on, and we are going to be looking at some safety things coming up, we're gonna be installing some new Pappy lights for the runway, and we're gonna do the engineering on all that, get that all set, and that will probably be the following grant that will include the Pappy lights, but we are looking for a total from the FAA, and this is a couple of years of grant money that we have saved up, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-nine, of that, three-oh-five-five-thirteen is what we have saved up at the FAA, and then the county share will be thirty-three-nine-fourty-six in the match, and that pre-application's all ready to go, we're just looking for signatures, and then.
Those Pappy lights, the little ones that are.
Uh, Pappies are like the N lights, what they actually do is they sit parallel to the runway, and then if you are coming in at the right angle, those lights will shine green to you.
Oh.
If you are coming in at a wrong angle, or too short, or too long, it will show red so that you know you have to go around and do.
Oh, that's pretty important, yeah.
Like a glide slope thing, almost like a landing system on aircraft.
Correct.
I didn't realize that.
And that, it's now the only, our, our current rail lights are starting to go, we're starting to see a lot of corrosion in our runway lights and our rail lights, so this is now the only set of lights that FAA will fund, it's what they want all airports to have now, so we're gonna convert over to these and get caught up with most of the other airports around that already have them, it's a good safety feature, definitely.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Okay. Well, good, then, if we can do a read on that, then.
The Juggah County Airport Authority is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the application for federal assistance, pre-application for FAA Project 339-0054-0182015 to install Pappy RWYS eleven and twenty-nine, benefit cost analysis and design only and reconstruct asphalt, apron, for a total amount of $349,459, $305,513 FAA portion, and $33,946 county match.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Hi.
Commissioner's still there.
Hi. Patty, I was having a hard time sleeping the other night, so I tried to read some of this stuff, as far as that grant goes with that aviation thing, how, how did, I mean, I couldn't really see a whole lot of strings attached as far as, I mean, it's just, at the end of the day, I mean, I know they, they hit on some education issues that we need to, you know, just look to, to continue to keep, you know, younger generations involved in aviation, but, I mean, it just, it seems like it's just a scenario that that money is out there, and just us trying to basically apply for it, if we don't, we're just.
Right, then we can't do the capital first yet, and we're out, yeah.
Plus, we won't have what we need to operate as an airport, I would think.
Right, well, they do, whenever we sign the grant, you will, when we actually approve the grant, you sign it, you will also be assigning some, some assurances that you give the FAA, and they don't want to continually put money into a place that is going to close and/or be run down, so you do give them some assurances at the time that you physically sign the grant, which will probably come in August of, of 15, and, and they basically revolve around, they do give preference to veterans when you're hiring or, or things, they ask you to keep the airport open going forward twenty years, so that is something that is committed to, they will assist, as they have done, and I don't see that being an issue, they do ask you to, there's thirty-nine different assurances, yes, and, and, you know, the big ones are monies that are made on the airport, need to stay on the airport so that you're not making money on the airport, giving it somewhere else, and then asking for federal assistance.
Yep.
So, I mean, they all, they all make sense.
Yeah.
Some of them, yes, they want to keep us educated and, and make sure that we're all doing the things that are gonna make airports safe, everything is related to safety, so the assurances that you give them are ones that.
Reasonable.
Are reasonable, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
The longest one is keeping the airport going, you know, forward for twenty years, but.
Yeah, because we discussed that many years ago about closing the airport, and there's so much money involved that we've received.
Sure.
That will be overwhelming.
You know, and it's not always a matter of just paying it back, the FAA doesn't want that, they want the airports kept open, and they are willing to assist with them, and it's been working very well, and I've been here almost ten years, and, you know, what we take in on the things we sell there, the fuel, the hangar rents, are able to sustain us operationally, it's these capital improvements that we could not make if we didn't take assistance.
The Medevac.
Medevac is a major. Medevac has been really nice for us, and then there's gonna be a new improvement coming up for airports, we've been noticing throughout the years and lobbying a little bit to ODOT because all of the fuel sales and the taxes on those fuel sales that are done by Ohio airports amount to over thirteen million dollars a year for Ohio, and they give back right now eight-hundred thousand in the form of grants, and the FAA's been saying, okay, well, we've, we always ask the airports, money that's made on the airport should stay on the airport, why isn't this staying here?
Yeah.
So, now what they're doing is, the FAA has given ODOT Department of Aviation three years to move that money out of their general fund and into some type of a grant program to start helping all of the airports in Ohio, so we'll now have another pool to draw from for the first time, and we're gonna try to take advantage of that as well, the money's already been there, it's already been made by our airport, been paid by our pilots and our people that use the fuel there, and, and it's time that it comes back to assist the airport, is, is the program, so they've got three years to do that, and we'll be applying for some of those grants as we, as we go through.
Okay, well, thanks again for all our work here.
Thank you.
Yeah. Number thirteen?
That was our public hearing, that was our.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, hey, good morning, Kelly. The Commissioners will hold a public hearing at ten fifteen, we're a little bit late, but for the amendment of number one to the 2013 Community Development Block Grant CDVG allocation.
We'll make a motion to waive the reading of the.
Set to that.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi.
Good.
This is the legal notice that we have to put in the paper that we brought forth a few weeks ago, a request for the amendment because we had to eliminate two projects, we wanted to not send all that money back to the state, we had a vital project with the fairgrounds that could have used the money to help with their in-kind part of the contribution, so this is the amendment that we're requesting to the state for the final of that amendment request.
Any questions or comments? So, basically, just to summarize, we're, we've got dollars that were in Burton.
In Burton Lock Haven.
There was the legis, or some kind of litigation going on over there, and we couldn't hold the funds any longer there, so put it to use in the fairgrounds, so, I think it's a pretty, pretty simple deal. Okay, so at ten-twenty-five. Cause a public, cause a public hearing? Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
All right, so then we will go to item number eight with the Juggah County Engineering.
Morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good. This is just the wrap-up of the Bainbridge Road Federal Project, change order, approved and executed, the final change order decreasing the amount of, the amount of thirty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars.
Do you, you decreased it thirty-seven thousand?
Yes, it was a decrease, we actually, this is one of the first projects where we're actually doing the mill, we actually milled off the surface, our pavements are getting to that point of where, well, they're perpetual, they're almost a little perpetual pavement where we, we just mill off the surface and put it down, so we reduce the amount of pavement repairs that we anticipate, so that was.
I see. Okay, so if we could do a read on that.
The County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute change order number one in final decreasing the contract with construction company incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Bainbridge Road CH eleven sections H three G in Bainbridge Township in the amount of thirty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Hi.
Commissioner's still there.
Hi, motion approved. Thank you, have a good day, John. Hey, the Chair, how are you?
Good, good. Happy belated birthday.
Good to see you. Yeah, thank you, appreciate that. Congratulations to you, too.
Well, yeah, a couple of years, yeah. Couple of years.
All right.
I come to the Board today on three items, the first is declaration of county property as surplus, surplus, we've been replacing tasers for two years, it's got a rotation, the old tasers are obsolete, the vendor, the company manufacturer no longer supports with parts, batteries, projectiles, et cetera, most importantly, they will no longer supply an expert witness to come and testify on your behalf if you utilize that taser, during the course of time, we've accumulated about fifty, this is what we have, we checked with local vendors, houses, et cetera, there was no interest in them, we did locate an outfit Kaiser supplied, they're located in Indiana, they have offered us ten dollars a piece for them, and we would have a credit for some other law enforcement equipment, our alternative, because they're a police model, not a civilian model, would be to crush, destroy them, so we thought this was at least a, a better step in the right direction, so, that's what we're asking.
So, is, do you have a changeover for everybody with the new models now?
Yes, we're getting, we're getting, we've got a rotation, we've got a few more as we pull out, and that's why we're saying approximately fifty, we're pulling them out and doing a basic refreshment, so.
Okay, all right, sounds good, so then if we could do a read on number nine?
The Sheriff's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute resolution of the fourteen dash one-seven-seven declaring county property as surplus and direct sale of equipment against purchase of other law enforcement equipment as authorized by ORC three oh seven point one two, section G.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Hi.
Commissioner's still there.
Hi, motion approved.
Thank you. Again, I think that's, five hundred bucks is better than nothing.
Absolutely.
Okay, the, the next item is our power grant, Violence Against Women's Act, head based salary for an investigator, primarily concentrates on offenses, violent offenses against women, to include domestic violence and others, this is a continuation of a grant that we've been getting, and this is a, a second pre-award, bottom line, because it comes from a couple of sources, is the monies that were used, monies coming forward, et cetera, we'll get just shy of sixty thousand dollars from the Office of Criminal Justice Services, fifty-nine, nine sixty-five, fifty-four, so this is a pre-award.
Okay, so what we'll do then, we'll read number eleven and twelve, or, sorry, ten and eleven.
Number ten, okay, let me give you the background on number ten, this is our third timely committ, Commissioners with grants, as we work towards replacing, leveraging dollars and replacing the MDT's, the computers in cars to get to new operating software
Do you still have XP in a lot of those MDT's?
Yeah, OLED, there's some, many of the state database sites are no longer supporting the old, and there's an interface issue, computers have to be upgraded, the new grant will allow us to get seven computers and mounts as we move towards replacement, so that's the two items.
And that, and then those, the ones that you'll be able to get, those are gonna be the same to match whatever else you're buying, I mean, they'll be the same type of units?
Correct, we used one of the early grants to purchase a couple of computers so we could test from, we tested from Fujitsu, we tested from Dell.
Who'd you end up going with?
We ended up with the Fujitsu, their, their after-delivery service was much, much better than, than the Dell, we had issues with them, and it just, yeah, they look beyond just the initial price.
Just equipment, yeah.
Yeah.
No, is it set up like the hardbooks?
They'll already be there.
Is it set up with like the hardbooks, or is it more of a laptop?
It is a, a laptop, it's not ruggedized like the Panasonic, the Panasonic, although an excellent piece of equipment, very, very expensive, you're talking five thousand dollars plus per laptop, these are much more competitively priced, we're looking roughly the three-thousand-dollar range, a little bit, a little bit more with mommy bracketry, et cetera, you know, it doesn't make sense in this day and age by a twenty-year computer.
Right, absolutely.
That's it, I mean, and, and, you know, next year's something, you know, and it just, yeah, I mean, you're almost just getting a rotation.
When you get close to two-for-one.
Makes sense, maybe even a little bit more than that, yeah.
So, I personally run a Fujitsu and, and cruise around driving, I think, close to a year, and it's performed well, it's been durable, quick, that's what we wanted to do, so.
Okay, that sounds good, all right, if we can do a read on those, then?
The Sheriff's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Office of Criminal Justice Services pre-award grant conditions for the Juggah County Stop Violence Against Women Act, VIWA, grant number two zero one four WFBA two eight-two-one-four, and two zero one four WFBA two eight-two-one-four-B. The Sheriff's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Office of Criminal Justice Services pre-award grant conditions for the MDT replacement, grant number two zero one four GG A A, A zero two six four six eight.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Hi.
Commissioner's still there.
Hi, thank you. Have a good day, now.
You too.
Okay, Mike from Kansas.
Excuse me, sir.
Good morning, got your message, I'm down at Kansas, we didn't hold you.
As you can see, we have a particular advertisement for two part-time drivers.
Okay.
Transit, one is to replace a gentleman that we recently hired who's working on a great company, has a personal issue, he's assigned from us, and then asking for one additional driver to go forward in 2015, gives a little more operational flexibility, helping out the seniors and the other folks in Juggah County, so.
Good, sounds good, all right, if we could do a read on number twelve?
The Transit Department is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for two part-time transit drivers, number twenty-two ten dash one, these positions are being posted until Phil.
Son of.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Hi.
Commissioner's still there.
Hi, motion approved. Thank you, Mike. Okay, Office of Community and Economic Development, morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good. Both of these items are the result of mortgages placed and property renewal, the assistance, yeah, grants.
They're paying off, though.
Yeah, they, they're reducing the, the way that it works, it reduces eight percent here, and the twenty percent remains, it never goes away, but when they, what we've been doing lately is when they want to refinance, they had typically asked for subordination payments, and you don't want to continue to subordinate, we just want to pay off, so. They're typically refinancing from, you know, like maybe a six percent, five percent rate down to a three, or two, or three, three, it's really low, so, yeah, paying us off isn't, I would do a question, it's probably the best way, starts to relieve some of the people.
Right, right, right.
So, that's what this is.
Yeah, okay.
So, do we want to read fourteen and fifteen?
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and execute a satisfaction of mortgage for Kimberly L. Schroeder, for dump payment assistance for property located at one-two-six-three-zero Hopie Drive, Chesterland, under grant number B-C zero-three-zero-two-six-one, as the mortgage in the amount of ten thousand dollars has been satisfied, the Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and execute a satisfaction of mortgage for Kimberly L. Schroeder for rehabilitation assistance for property located at one-two-six-three-zero Hopie Drive, Chesterland, under grant number B-dash-C zero-three-zero-two-six-dash-two, as the mortgage in the amount of four-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy dollars has been satisfied.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting. Commissioner's still there.
Hi, motion approved. All right, thank you.
And I would also like to remind the Commissioners that our annual Christmas breakfast.
The sixteen.
We'd love to see you very.
Got to get my phone. Thank you.
Okay, and Jerry from Water Resources.
Morning.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good.
First item here is the, is the sole change order for our project at eighty-seven and three oh six in Russell, the, yeah, there's some underground, unforeseen underground conditions on the old, was it the old?
The gas station?
Gas station.
Oh, sure.
I don't think it was, who, the BP was, uh, BP was So-Hio, I think, when they closed, I don't think BP had even bought them yet at that point.
Northeast corner.
The northeast.
Some of the areas where they had removed their old tanks, and there was a lot of gravel and extra groundwater and everything that they had to deal with, and then we had similar issue with the service line that was gonna be put in for the Shell Station, their tanks were in the way, so we had to relocate that, which then took it into, took it into their pavement area, so we had some additional groundwork that wasn't perceived to begin with.
So, I mean, we're looking at thirteen thousand, four-nineteen of an increase?
Yeah.
So, I mean, compared to the whole project, we're under ten. So I mean, compared to the whole project, we're under ten percent.
That is, yeah, that total change order was, I think, when I looked at it, was about seven percent.
Okay.
And we're still well within the original assessment numbers that were put on that stuff.
Plus, at the time of the year, too, when they started that, that's quite a mess to work in that.
Yeah, they did, they did, they did a very good job, too, I mean, people, once they were done, they got cleaned up and, you know, seated, got everything ready to go. I had a couple of people come, and you couldn't even tell them that there was even a project that had been there, so.
Huh, very nice. Are people pretty satisfied with, with the, with the whole deal?
Yeah, everybody's, everybody except for the Shell station is tied in.
Okay.
If you may correct that, the town, the township office buildings, their service connection is run, they're not officially tied in yet because they needed to have a grinder pump, which they're still waiting for their, for their grinder pump to be delivered.
And what about the, were the fire department and the police department, are they in too?
The, the new one, they, they have been in, they, they were put in when they, when they were constructed, they tied in, they're actually tied in through the subdivision.
On the back side?
Yeah.
On the west side, correct, the Hawks, you know, Hawks more, Hawks more, down, Hackett Woods.
Okay.
That's been a long time of coming, man.
And those are all tied into that Russell lane, right?
Correct, the Russell Park, and we're still, we're working on that, getting, we got, we are waiting on getting approval for, from O D N R and Army Corps. And in the meantime, we started having some issues with our filter, our filter system there, and that's been the issue in the past, when we've had flooding, where that filter system has, has gone out. What we're looking at, we're going to roll into that project, replacing the filters, and we're actually move, move them, put in disc filters, which are above-ground systems, instead of being rapid sand filters in-ground. So that'll get them out above-ground, and we won't, we shouldn't have, see any issues if we do get flooding again out there.
And where do we stand with that E Q tank there, how, how did?
That was what we were waiting on, the approval from the Army Corps and O D N R for.
Okay.
So we're still, you kind of, we're going to put that in, put this all into the same project, and that way we'll, we'll get one contractor doing everything, and we'll wind up with two seven projects.
So then the E Q hasn't actually been?
It has not gone in yet, but the plans are, are, you know, were, were approved by the E P A, subject to O D N R and Army Corps giving us approval. And I had a hard, hard time even finding anybody at O D N R who would say, who, who, who would even let me know whether they could review it and give me an answer, so.
So we still have some, some, some form of, some overflow issues then, every once in a while with some storms?
Just the, the, we actually have, have reduced those because we did, not on the plant, but through the collection system, we've worked on ma, making repairs to the collection system, so we don't, we're not seeing quite as high I N I.
Okay.
And as long as the river, you know, we've, we've actually, sure, getting the discharge line up, so the river's not causing, because it tends to be what happens is, the discharge line was getting filled, was getting covered by the river, so we weren't able to push as much out.
Yeah.
And that's what was causing the backup in the, in the plant also.
Yeah, okay. So then the bypasses have probably gone down quite a bit?
Yeah, as far as, well, the bypasses haven't gone down since we got the filter back up and running.
Okay.
Once we got, once we got the pumps and everything in there, we haven't had to have any bypasses to it.
Okay.
The problem with the filters right now is the, the metal tank is rusting through, so we're getting groundwater into, into the system, which is fine, it's clean water getting into, but it's, and it's still going in through the sand filter even, so we're, we're filtering, we're now filtering groundwater before it goes out, but it's not affecting any of our samples or anything like that.
That, that, that system is pretty old, though.
Yeah, it was put in originally in the, well, the original plant was put in the early sixties, and then it was upgraded and replaced, almost completely replaced in like seventy-two, so.
Okay.
And now we're, we'll have, hopefully, within the next year, we'll have the tank in and then a brand-new filter system, relocating the, even, even really, part of our project, what we're looking at, is we're going to relocate the blower, the blowers out of the, up into the new building, so they'll be up higher also.
Yeah.
So we do have, and we're raising the dice around the, around the plant, so.
Nice. Okay. Alright, so then, so we need to do a read on sixteen, is it?
Yes, the Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute change order number one, in final, increasing the contract with Mr. Excavator for the Russell Township Center sewer project in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Mr. Sweetie?
Aye.
Mr. Spidler?
Aye, motion approved.
And then we've, Merritt Road here.
Yeah, next is our Merritt Road Garage, asking the permission to go out for the request for proposal process, start the request for proposal process. To update the, or in, increase the office facility down there, as well as putting in a cold storage area for some, some of our trucks to be able to park outside instead of in the garage. And then we have, we've been looking at for a while, and this will, we're one of this project, relocating and upgrading our existing fuel tank area. There, right now, our fuel tanks are actually owned by Omen Oil, so we have to buy our oil, or buy our gas from them. We're going to have our own, so then we can go out and actually bid out and get, you know, better prices on our, on our fuel.
So would you be redoing a complete fuel system?
Yeah, we would actually be relocating it and everything to, to corner the property.
So let me ask you something on that, so would you be looking to possibly take your offices and everything down there, is that the goal?
That would be the, the ultimate goal, yeah, at some point, as well as bringing the lab up from infirmary into that building, and kind of consolidating the department back together.
Because, you know, this is something that I've always, I've always, you know, not, you know, shook my head on is, is, if you're going to be doing that, why would we not want to look at consolidating a fuel, a fuel station for all county vehicles?
All county vehicles.
And have a smart system, that you would have a card to be able to swipe and, and, and be able to, you know, you just swipe your, your card, and you're who's, who it is that's filling it up, and that, and it gives you the breakdown of who it is, but then we could have, you know, you could fill up there, you could have the engineer's office, I don't know if they've got their tanks already over there or not, but, you know, the sheriff's office is filling that Burton, Burton number there, Western Reserve.
Well, transit is going to gas lead vehicles, and all they have for more diesel, so that's right across.
Diesel, so, you know, if we could, if we could try to think about, before we go and spend a little bit of money here, a little bit of money here, a little bit of money here, maybe we need to look at this and say, this probably makes sense, and at that point, you know, being in that hub right there, all of those vehicles could service it and do it just right once.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, and we do, right now, we, we, we could definitely be part of that.
Yeah.
Because right now, we even had, just for our vehicles, and for each of our employees, everybody has a gas card and a vehicle card, so both of those go into the, into the system, and we keep track of.
Yeah.
Vehicles, and, you know, double checking, it helps for us, too, just with, for ours, to say, double checking mileage, of looking at and saying, hey, wait a minute, this vehicle's starting to lose gas mileage, what's going on, let's bring it in and get, get it checked out, but we, we could add that to the system, too.
Exactly, and that was the, you know, and, and, that, that was the whole thing, too, I mean, as far as fleet management, to be able to have that card that you indicate your mileage, and then, you know, it'll flag it, if there's a major, you know, difference in, you know, in, in where the mileage is, it'll spike that on the report, but each individual department would have their own report that it could produce. And the other big thing is, we could bid, put bids out for fuel, and, and reduce our costs, right now, you know, we're, we're kind of at the mercy of what some of these gas stations want to charge, where, where we might be able to do something in bulk to be able to bring the whole cost down, too.
So. Yeah, I mean, we can talk about that further, if it's something, if we want to do that as part of this project, and then open it up for some.
Then it'll reduce your costs, as far as your department, if we have the assistance of multiple agencies that want to do that, I think it just makes sense to do, you know, more in numbers than, than to just try to have.
Individual, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Alright, sorry to take us off track there, but, so then, number seventeen, then, if we could do a read?
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board authorize the department to begin the request for R F P process for architectural design services for the expansion of the Water Resources Garage located at one two five five zero Merritt Road in Claremont Township.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Mr. Sweetie?
Aye.
Mr. Spidler?
Aye.
Motion approved. And, you know, just come to think of that, because I can get my gas sometimes over there, I think the county engineers, think that they're, but I think the county engineer's office gets their gas at Burton Fuel, too.
A lot of people get it at Burton.
Oh, yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, so, and it's, it's a real pain, because their tanks are a little bit difficult, because they're short, you know, so they're, you get a, a big overflow there, and sometimes, you know, it's, it's almost like the county is hindering the other business to come in there to do business, because can't get in because of the line of trucks and stuff, so.
They probably like our business, though.
I'm sure they do.
Sure they like it, and sometimes you move it, they lose it.
They could sell, they could bid on selling to us in bulk.
Oh, they could sell it in bulk, correct.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And the better, the, yeah, and to lower the price.
And, and it'll free up their pumps for, for other people, too.
Especially if you can track it with a computer, you can track what's going on, that's the big thing, you're really under.
Well, if you design it, you know, enough room, then ultimately down the road, maybe you're looking at, at natural gas, at a natural gas pump station.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a problem, yeah.
Okay, so, something to really consider, skip. Thank you, Cap, there.
What were we thinking about?
Thanks, Jerry.
I already talked to Joe about that, actually, he must be reading my mind. I ran into some bulk storage folks when I was on the Commissioner's Association thing, so, we talked a little bit about that.
Okay, then we've got here, the Commissioners' Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number one four dash one seventy, establishing the starting location and time of the December twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners in Russell Township, that will begin six A M.
Six A M?
Is the board's A M? Are you saying A M?
Bring your flash, bring your flash.
Oh, we're talking about.
Are you saying a skipper?
Yeah. I just wanted to.
Just wake everybody up, that's all. So that's nine A M?
So nine A M.
Okay, and that's December twenty-third, okay. Yeah, I think I, yeah, I have that, okay, great, still water.
Still got to get up before breakfast to do that.
I'll make a motion on that.
Mr. Sweetie?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Shield your eyes, because I'm going to fire up the, the overhead here.
Here. And we're doing, oh, appropriation.
And the computers left talking to the. A little better.
Yeah.
There we go.
Here it is.
There it is. Okay, I moved my panel over a little bit on the video.
Can you see it?
Yeah, we'll turn the lights off. Turn the lights off, so if you want it down.
Those off.
Yeah. Okay, alright, so this is our discussion of the twenty-fifteen permanent appropriation. This is the budget.
This is it.
This is the budget that we actually spend from, so, we've had a tax budget, we'll go through the cycle here in a minute. But, let me walk on to the next page here, and go over the budget process. Budget Commission certifies revenues expected to be received for the year, and along with that, they look at the unencumbered fund balance at the beginning of the year, and that's the, the cash in the checkbook, less all the purchase orders that have been written and carried over, that we've committed to spend, so that money that's in that checkbook. So, together, revenues and beginning balance are resources, so, resources is an important term, because when the commissioners go to set the appropriation, set the budget, they cannot spend more than the resources that have been certified by the Budget Commission.
Okay, and for today's purposes, we're mainly going to talk about the general fund, which we've used. There's other funds found in, in, you know, in the budget, but they are by and large spoken for grant funding, that have to be segregated for certain purposes, and the general fund is the, the large operating fund account. So as Dave said, we had our, our resources for the budget certified by the Budget Commission in August, and we had estimated the carryover balance of about four point five million, which is a relatively conservative estimate, but we always do that for budgeting purposes. And then the revenue amount that they actually certified for the year next year is twenty, just under twenty-five million dollars, to give us total certified resources of twenty-nine million four hundred sixteen thousand and nine hundred forty-eight dollars, so that is what we are able to appropriate. Just taking a look at the revenue side, just the breakdown of what those revenues are in the general fund, as you can see, the sales tax is about forty-four percent, and the real estate taxes collected are about thirty percent, so those two income sources are the large, almost three-quarters of the operating budget of the, the general fund. Some of the other sources are, the nine percent is in the department fees combined, those are fees that are charged by our, our county departments, the auditors, the building department, the courts, all the fees that they collect, the recorders, the treasurer's office. Other is about four percent, that is mainly the rent that we collect on county buildings, we have some gas well revenue, some miscellaneous grants, and things that we collect from the auction proceeds, things that are put up for auction on the county auction. Property transfer tax, that is a fee that's charged when a property deed is transferred to a new owner, that's about three percent, about eight hundred fifty thousand. Also, about three percent is our casino tax, that's the tax on the casinos that are operating within the state of Ohio, their gross earnings, and fifty-one percent come to the counties, and it's allocated by population. About two percent is our local government tax, which has been decreasing in, in the past years, that's the revenue sharing fund that comes from the state, it's distributed by the state to the local governments. About another two percent is prisoner housing, that's a pretty conservative estimate, but that's the revenue that's generated from housing inmates at our, in our county jail, that's immigration inmates, mostly Cuyahoga, to some other smaller entities. Another five hundred thousand or two percent is from cost allocations, that's the chargeback we do to some county departments that are outside of the general fund, that receive services from the general fund. And the last part of just about one percent, and this has gone down substantially, is the interest income, that's the revenue that's generated on the investments by the county, which at one point, I think in two, two thousand eight, it was two point four million, now it's down to three hundred thousand.
As we, I often talk about the, the fact that the revenue from two thousand eight, two thousand thirteen was about the same in total, but dramatically different in its composition.
So that makes up the revenue that's in the county. As you said, the total appropriation in this permanent appropriations budget for all the funds is about a hundred and eight point four million, the part for the general fund, as you said before, is about twenty-nine point four million, that's what we had in resources available, but we, we did have additional requests from departments, a total of about thirty point two million. And as Dave put a little note down there, that's, that difference of about eight hundred thousand also doesn't include, we had additional requests from some departments outside of the general fund that would like transfers from the general fund, so we had to take, commissioners had to take that into account when they're looking at all those requests.
So again, the, the total appropriation of all funds is a hundred eight point four million, what that means is, that's the total amount of money that currently we expect to be, have checks written for Jock County purposes, for purposes of entities within the commissioner's budget. You know, the, the county treasury and the county auditor receives a lot more money than that, from various sources, that's then dispersed to the schools, to the townships, to the villages, so there's a lot more money than, but this hundred eight that goes through the county treasury, and is turned around and paid back out by the county auditor. The part we're looking at today is what the commissioners control for county operations within the commissioner's budget. This also doesn't include, the Park District is not in that hundred eight million dollars, the Health District is not in that hundred eight million dollars, and the Library, Jock County Library is not in that number, those are, I usually say, those are three agencies that people think of that are county agencies, that are not in the commissioner's budget, and not part of that hundred eight million dollars. Again, that money is being received in by the treasurer, their money, and spent out by them, but it's not part of our budgets, not anything the commissioners control. but it's not part of our budgets, not anything the Commissioners control.
Okay, so we talked about the revenue, this is just a breakdown of where the money actually goes out of the general fund and how it's spent there, breakdown between the departments. See, the largest portion, about 40 percent, is the public safety, which is the sheriff's office is the majority of that. And then we also have the coroner's office, and the building department is included in public safety. And that's about 10.8 million dollars of the budget. Next, largest segment would be the legislative and executive, that's about 32 percent, or eight, just about 8.5 million. That's most of the other elected officials' offices, that's the auditors, our Commissioners' office, the prosecutor, the recorder, the treasurer, our record center, ADP or the IT department, maintenance, planning, and also the Board of Elections is included in that. And then 17 percent is for the judicial, that's most of the courts, common pleas, juvenile probate court, also the clerk of courts, and our public defender's office, I mean, that judicial, 17 percent. We have 2 percent that goes to conservation and recreation, that's the funding that we provide to the OSU Extension and also the Soil and Water Conservation District. Human Services, we have another 2 percent, that is our Veterans Service Commission. And we have the 1 percent for health, that is state mandated, it goes to the Ohio Department of Health for children with medical handicaps. And the county is obligated to appropriate, it's a tenth of a mil, and so our maximum liability for the year, we don't always have to pay that, but our maximum liability would be 314,000 dollars.
And then the other portion, they would have the levy, their levy that would...
Well, that's, that's the Health District.
Control their own deal.
Yeah, this, that's a separate deal. This is, they call this a crippled children fund. And we have, and we have to appropriate that money, even if in the end they don't ask for it. So that money's tied up for the year.
Right, but that is our maximum. Once we get, reach that maximum, we wouldn't have to pay over, and we typically don't go up to that amount, but we do have to appropriate it.
And that's about how much?
About 300,000.
300, okay.
Is the max. Some years we...
It's a tenth of a mil.
Some years we spend a lot less, and that becomes part of that carryover of that, okay, good, we didn't have to spend that money that we had to set aside.
I see.
And then that other miscellaneous, that 6 percent, a large portion of that is the funding that we provide to Ravenwood Mental Health Center for the operation of the youth center. A lot of our professional service contracts are in there, our liability and property and vehicle insurance that we pay for all the departments in the county, our portion of the Court of Appeals that we have to pay, postage, legal fees, just a lot of other miscellaneous.
Transfers out, is that?
No, this is just operate.
Okay, I see operate.
Yeah.
Okay, a lot of small, small print here, try and go through this pretty quick. These are the requests that are over, currently we have over and above the approved tax, tax budget. In other words, these extra numbers are not yet in this appropriation we're presenting to the Commissioners to adopt today. Remember, that, that previous slide showed about 800,000 dollars, 30.2 million requests versus 29.4 in the appropriation. And you see this number is, is higher by a coast of 400,000 dollars. That includes, this number includes additional money that these departments are asking for to not put it in their general fund accounts, but rather transfer to, out of the general fund, to special fund accounts that they control, okay? So, the auditor, and I think Heidi has the back, has the backup on a lot of this. And that's usually when we're in the budget hearings, in September or October, the Commissioners of City Reuse Department, and there's a budget hearing, and they make the requests, and they, and they look, and they explain in considerable detail a lot of cases, this is the extra money, this is why we need it. So I think Heidi has some of that, probably.
Yeah, the auditor amount is basically for travel, and Auditor Plia is now the president of the Auditors Association, and then there was a small amount of salary increase in there. The ADP Board is, they want to increase their contract services, they wanted to have a little additional overtime for some personnel to cover their chief technology officer, and also there's a capital equipment request in their first switch upgrades. Board of Elections is also a capital equipment, they are looking to purchase e-poll books for the polling locations. Building Department is also a capital, that's vehicle replacement. Clerk of Courts is a reappropriation of a project that they've tried to get going for the past couple of years, a scan to microfilm project. Community Development, that 100,000 is they're requesting to have transferred to their local revolving loan fund, which is the loans that they, they give to businesses in Jocka County. Juvenile Probate is made up of multiple different things, there's some salary requests, contract services. They also wanted to expand their FIP program, which is the Family Life Intervention Program, part of the heroin initiative. The Maintenance Department has a capital request for a dump trunk, and also some additional personnel, and they would like to increase their jail maintenance line items since they, a lot of the jail items are now not under warranty. OSU Cooperative Extension just asked for additional operating funds, they've been flat funded for a number of years. Sheriff, most of that is, they are requesting two additional vehicles, we funded four in the tax budget, and they're looking for two more, and then also they would like to purchase some body cameras for the deputies. And the Veterans Service Commission, that initially was a salary request, although they have recently submitted that they're not going to be needing that full amount, so that request will be lower.
Any questions on this page?
Yeah, and I don't have my glasses on, but the additional money is requested by the sheriff, is that 99,000?
99,900.
99,900, okay.
And then the vehicles, the vehicles are probably 50, 55,000 of that. The body cameras, again, this is, you know, kind of like what we see going on, where the police say, such and such happened, an incident, and the other person involved says something else, the body camera is designed to document what's going on, so.
It's a good thing. So, okay, this is, these are only wish lists, yes?
Right.
Yeah, okay, at this point.
At this point. Skip.
Do we, do we have documented how much of this creates a permanent liability versus a temporary capital expense?
Well, that's what I was discussing with Dave, I mean, anytime you have salary or additional personnel, that is an ongoing expense, capital equipment request would be just a one time.
If you get a body camera, wow, that, even body camera, so there's a maintenance liability, future liability, because if you buy it now, you've got a procedure in place, and in the long term, you've got to replace them over time as I got a computer and so on and so forth, so there is a permanent liability associated with those. Do we somehow document that, so we can tell out of this list?
She would get all the, all the backups.
She has all that.
And you can give me a copy of this, right?
Yes.
Yep. Any questions? Okay, so let me walk you through the supplemental process. After the beginning of the year, we will know how much cash we have sitting in the checking account beginning of the year. And we're gonna use, for example, based on recent history, that we ought to be around 7 to 7.5 million plus lines. So, that gets people buzzing about having, ooh, a 7 million dollar carryover. To me, that's kind of like you look at your checkbook online, and you know you've written a lot of checks, but boy, that balance looks really good right now, because those checks haven't cleared. It's kind of the same thing, okay? So let's walk down and see what we end up with. First of all, we, we're all, we historically are gonna have, you know, around, a little bit less than 10 percent worth of that cash balance is gonna be tied up in purchase orders. We've committed to, to spend money, and it's gonna come out of that 7.5. So now we're down to 6.9 million. Now, for budgeting purposes, you recall, we assume 4.5 million dollars worth of carryover for the appropriation we're placing with, or offering to the Commissioners for adoption today. So, that money's already spent, you can't spend it twice, that's already spent. So now that leaves us with 2.4 million are this example available for looking at other things. One thing we haven't talked about yet, but Heidi has thoroughly documented, is we have a lot of money every year that's put, has to go into what's called transfers out accounts. These are transfers out of the general fund into other funds for purpose, or for spending purposes, out of those funds. Some of that is discretionary, and, you know, what, what Heidi will be preparing to provide to the Commissioners right beginning next year is a complete list of, these are the transfers out. And they, they can go down them, and they'll, and we'll go over any questions that you have, we'll say, okay, this one is pretty much a mandated, we have to spend the money, this one you could decide to change that number or eliminate that number. So some is discretionary, but by no means all of it discretionary. Contingency, in, in our budget that we're presenting today, we have 350,000 dollars in there. Historically, we like to have, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, 300, that's right. Historically, we like to start the year with about 3 percent of the general fund. You're allowed to put in 3 percent for contingency, that would be 750,000 dollars. In some years, like this year, we have quite a bit left in that contingency. Right now, we have a little bit under 500,000 of that 750, so we have a comfortable balance in there. Last year, the Commissioners decided in August that they, they wanted to look at funding for the heroin problems. And the Commissioners sat down and made a, based on requests from departments, made a supplemental appropriation in August of 292,000 dollars. Because we set up that kind of contingency fund, we had the money and the resources available to do that without having to make painful cuts somewhere else. So we would recommend to put, put that 450 on top of the 300 that's currently sitting in there to take the contingency up to 750, but again, that's something the Commissioners may decide to change.
But the other thing with contingency that we've had to do in the past is, at some point during the year, one of our revenue sources falls, the Budget Commission is going to decertify that revenue. And so, once they decertify your resources, you have to take it somewhere out of your budget. So in the past, I think 2009.
Right.
We had to pull that money out of contingency, and, and a couple other areas to cover it, but it is, it's kind of your...
Safety and health.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that hadn't been in there, we would have had to make cuts in other appropriation areas, possibly salaries. I said, look, we, we don't have enough money now in that, in that, was that?
I think we did.
Yeah, well, we may have, I mean, or we could, but because we had a contingency buffer there, we didn't have to make cuts that affected or caused layoffs because of that decertification we got in the middle of 2009. Finally, there is this departmental request that we had illustrated on the last page of 1.1 million. Now, we can't do all that, because if, if we did all that, the general fund balance remaining after that looked like comfortable 7.5 million dollars would actually be negative 730,000 dollars. But Joe, please don't write in there, we're gonna have a 730,000, we can't do that.
We won't do that.
We're just demonstrating that if they wanted to do all that, and if we started with, you know, now, for some reason, we started with 8.3 million, then we could do everything. But that would probably not be, that's probably not what we're gonna see based on Heidi's forecast of cash, which are usually very accurate. I mean, it's all dependent, though, on how much money out of their appropriation the elected officials of the department had spent on that general fund appropriation they were given at the beginning of the year. Typically, we don't spend a lot more in most cases than 90 percent of what they're provided. And that enables us to have that carryover, whereas if they spent it all down, we'd be, you know, we'd be down around this 4.5 that we put in the budget. So, the takeaway from this is, we don't have a 7-plus billion dollar pot of money that people can ask for money out of. In reality, we don't have it. In reality, we're not gonna have a deficit, because we can't have a deficit.
So the department requests would have to be reduced down to 300, 400,000?
Well, department requests, reducing some of those transfers out, and maybe not putting quite as much in contingency. Those are, those are the areas where the Commissioners will have to adjust to reality, so that they don't spend more than the resources that are certified by the Budget Commission. Any questions on this slide? This is a very important slide, you have to understand. Then finally, we always do a slide on general fund debt. We had a million dollars available in our debt retirement fund in August. So we applied 750,000 against the final debt of the safety center, thus paying the safety center off less than nine years after it opened. And we put 250,000 dollars on the radio upgrade, it was 4.5 million originally? Originally, okay. Now, so the safety center debt's paid off, we now have 3 million dollars remaining on the radio upgrade. So with the general fund, our debt is currently 3 million dollars. In this, in this appropriation, where we've made a provision for 500,000 dollars to go toward retiring that 3 million dollar debt within six years, which I think is important, because this is, this is debt on technology. And you don't want to finance technology too long, because it comes, it becomes obsolete and obsolescent pretty quickly. And that is the end. Do they have any questions?
So you don't have what each department's going to get, you know?
Well, that's in, that's in that, that's in that document over there.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, for those who aren't watching.
Very different from what the tax budget does, because we're still limited by those resources, so.
And this has always worked, this, this approach has always worked well.
Well, the goal is, we watch the money very care, Heidi watched the money very carefully. We're very fortunate to have Heidi, who is on this all the time. We don't get surprised very often, we got surprised a little in 2009.
Yeah, that was.
But other than that, we don't get surprised very often, and we're, we're looking out in the future. So if we have to make adjustments, we can keep them as painless as possible, because we start adjusting as soon as possible, so we're not being surprised to have to make big cuts that really hurt.
The only thing that I, I would probably add to this is, you know, to, to try to remain transparent, you know, to the taxpayers too, is that, you know, we're in, you know, major discussions with a lot of different departments, being, you know, the court, as you saw today, water resources, probation, you know, just a lot of the different situations that we're facing, the clerk of courts, Veterans Service Commission, that there's a lot of, a lot of these different departments that are coming forward that we, we've got, we've gotten to, to a point in the county where we're, we can exist for a little bit longer, but our population is dictating that we're outgrowing some of the facilities and some of the needs that we have in this county, and it's, it's not a situation that we want to just throw money around, because I think that, I think that Heidi does a great job, I think that Dave has been doing a good job, and the, the, the current and past Commissioners have always been very responsible and very accountable to their money. But we also have a realization that we're gonna have to make some changes, and, and, and there's gonna be some things that are gonna have to come up, and rather than just come out with a smoking gun and saying, you know, here's what we're gonna do, we want to keep the public involved in the decision process, and, and to be able to make them a part of the whole process moving forward, so everybody feels comfortable. You're always gonna have opposition, I don't care if you gave somebody a million dollar check, they would complain about the color of the check, you know? It's just, you're gonna have that. But ultimately, we just, you know, our goal is not to throw money away, and, and I think that, you know, I know, coming into this position a couple of years ago, that the past Commissioners have done a good job, you know, and, and, you know, I mean, Mary and, and Tracy and Bill Young, you know, as far as the safety center, you know, getting that all taken care of, you know, at an earlier time, and just making some of those decisions. And just like the safety center, that had to be a big decision that had to be taken on, but it's done. And it's, and it's, it's got now maintenance, you know, maintenance matters, like Skip said, but, but that's like anything else. And, but we, we need to just, we really need to just be, be open and, and forward with the fact that it's gonna have to be something, because we're, we're, whether, you know, we've got to find another funding source within our county to be able to make some of this happen for decisions. And I think that this is the perfect time to at least bring that up, because of the fact that this is a matter of the dollars and cents, and a lot of these departments have been at a position that they have been very, very, very tight in their belt of running a very, very tight operation. And, and sometimes what has happened is, is, is you try to save on one thing, but you pay someplace else. And I think, you know, the biggest, the biggest issue that, that we see is that, you know, we can pat ourselves on the back in this county, because the Commissioners ended up making a decision about a year and a half now to move forward on that heroin initiative. And there are successes that we can never measure in the form of... And there are successes that we can never measure in the form of what's ultimately life that we have saved. There's families that we have been able to, with, with the ability of aggressively pursuing this heroin issue, aggressively pursuing the fact that we're not gonna, we have zero tolerance, that there, we will never be able to say what we did on that part. And I, and, and I, and I'm not looking for that. But when you give us a comparison to a lot of the other counties and the issues that they are still seeing of growth and you see where we're at, we, we've actually kind of reached a plateau. And, and we should be proud of that. And, and it was money that we spent and, and from when I brought this up the first time, we either spend the money now or we spend it three to 10 times later and for a lifetime in keeping these people that are going to be affected by these drugs in a rehabilitation form forever and, and, and causing dollars forever. And I know that people say, "You can't arrest your way out of this," and I agree with that. But good, strong tactics to be able to take control of this and hit it head-on and identify it is critical. And, and I think that, you know, a lot of these courts, I mean, juvenile court, common pleas court, municipal court, they're all experiencing these, these issues. And, and especially on the, on the juvenile and when, when all these kids are in that curiosity and curiosity age and that age that they're getting involved in this stuff and, and all of a sudden, they're put on, put on that court, that, that their abilities to control some of this stuff and the costs that are there is difficult. And I, I think that it's just, everybody has to do what they can do to be able to stay within their budget. But at the same time, we also have to look at is, we've gotta come to a realization as a county and as a people have been reasonableness to move forward to say, "We understand this. Where do we go from here to just make some right decisions to, to, to bite the bullet now and save it a whole lot later?"
And I think-
We have an influence on this too, Ralph.
To who?
The press.
Right.
And in the public, you know, viewing of what you're doing and the, and the cause of transparency, the press is a significant item here as far as I can tell.
Oh, and that's the thing, we need to reach-
You know, to keep the public informed.
Right, and I, and I think-
We have the press, really.
Yeah.
But the attendance here is a witness to that.
Right.
You make a beautiful presentation. Thank you, Heidi and David.
Well, and there's a, there's a lot of people that'll view this online also. So, I mean, people look at this online and, you know, and it, and it, but, but you're right about that. And I think that, you know, it's like anything else, the old say, "Garbage in, garbage out." It's critical for us to put out good information. And, and good information and accurate information that's, that, you know, and to not have it as a slander fest. We just, we need to do the right thing. We need to do a, a position of, of looking out for the best interest of the whole county. And we're in a, we're, you know, I mean, Mary said it many times, you know, this county's changing and it's changed a lot. And it's gonna continue to change as we have more population. And, and just, we're dealing with a, in a whole society change of what, you know, almost as if, you know, right, wrong is right and right is wrong. And all of a sudden, our court systems are fluttered with just load.
Yeah, and I think too, I think too, Ralph, education to our young, young folks, I mean, really young, take them down to first grade, honestly. Start them right there and start to explain to them what this drug thing can do to them down the road. And, you know, we all have children that are in school and we certainly don't, our great, even grandchildren that we don't wanna see, you know, fall into this pit. And, I mean, we can look back in time and I can remember in the 60s, it was LSD. I mean, it was, and a lot of us can remember what it was like. And you will always have problems, but I think as long as we, we hit it head-on and we find that point where, you know, the diminishing returns start coming in, we need to find that.
Well, and I think that parents have to continue, continue-
They gotta be there.
Start doing parenting. That's, that's what it ultimately comes down to.
You're right.
Is it shouldn't be government's position to be parents. The parents should be parents.
I always remember the one teacher over at Notre Dame used to say, I remember her, Sister Bruce, she came out and she said, "I'm gonna tell you right now, 95% of the control or happens to your children is from the home."
Yes.
95%.
So with that, you know, if I can add kind of to reaffirm what you were saying, to me, what's important about what you're referring to as far as a plan and being transparent, I always look at it from an economic development standpoint. And I think that businesses, before they wanna invest a lot of money in the county, they wanna feel like government-
Makes sense.
Gets it and they're responsible and they understand and they have a plan. And they're gonna focus on moving things forward and, you know, try to minimize the infighting and try and be positive and accomplish great things. And I think, you know, going forward, I think previous boards have set this board coming up with an opportunity to do a lot of really good things.
I think they will.
So with that being said, if that brings our budget hearing to close, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna address one more issue before we, before we close out here. I had an opportunity last night to, to, well, last night I attended the Board of Mental Health meeting. And, and, and what I, what I found was, yesterday my phone did not stop ringing off the hook with parents from the West Giaga School District and Cardinal District. And I, and I probably had, I'd say probably close to 30, 30 parents come into, to the store last evening and it was not pleasant. And, and I, as I learned what was going on, I became extremely, extremely disturbed with this. And, and I found it necessary last night to attend the Board of Mental Health. And to give you a little bit of background here, what I found was that the school boards in the schools in Giaga County, not private schools, but, but the public schools, because I contacted Notre Dame to see if my daughter was gonna be involved in any of this and they said, they had absolutely no idea of any of this and that they wouldn't participate in this type of, of a, of a thing. But what happened was is this, there was, there's a survey that is going, that is being done with the children in our public schools from grade six through 12. There's also a survey that is going to be conducted on Friday at Berkshire for, for children for fourth grade and fifth grade of a, of a separate type of, of, of survey from what I was told this morning from another parent, that she said they have not yet given her the survey and they're concealing this from her. But the fact that they are supposedly doing this with fourth and fifth graders. And I was able to get ahold of this survey yesterday and, and I was absolutely appalled to some of the questions that were in the survey. Questions such as, "I think I am overweight." "A doctor said that I'm overweight." This would be on, on one of the back pages. But most, more than anything is that-
Ecstasy.
Is that this is, this is giving out to 11-year-olds, 10-year-olds that basically say, "These questions ask about your feelings and experience in other parts of your life."
Carried a handgun?
Think of your four best friends, tried beer, used marijuana, used LSD, carried a handgun. Does that sound familiar, carried a handgun? When we just had a major, major incident in one of our public schools and about three years ago, this same, same type of survey was circulated into public schools, which probably included sharding, okay? Now, what I'm telling you is this, is that these questions to a 10-year-old, if you told a 10-year-old, "I've heard that parents buy Christmas presents and keep them in the kitchen cupboards until Christmas," where do you think that that 10-year-old and 11-year-old is probably gonna go and look when you're not looking?
Kitchen cupboards.
Kitchen cupboards.
Yeah, yeah.
So when you're putting questions out like this-
Plant the seed, plant the seed.
On how many occasions have you drunk one or more drinks of an alcoholic beverage during the past 30 days? And then it goes on to say, zero occasions, one to two, three to five, eight to nine, 10 to 19, 20 to 39, 40 or more. So, so, so how about, how about taking it to the next one? How many occasions have you sniffed glue? Breathe the contents of an aerosol spray can or inhaled other gases or sprays in order to get high in your lifetime? How about this one? Used prescription drugs not prescribed to you in your lifetime? How about go to the, go to the medicine cabinet and start eating some of your parents' pills or your grandparents' pills? How about used bath salts to get high in your lifetime?
Bath salts?
Is, is this what we want our kids to be susceptible to?
Well, I think this is disturbing.
Well, let me, let me add on to that because I was also at the meeting last night and it was, this is being put out through the Mental Health Board.
Well, and let me finish. Hang, hang on one second because I wanna, I've got a full, so-
Right, to beat up a people and they start the fight?
It goes into even suicide. Sometimes I think not, life is not worth it.
That's disturbing.
All, all in all, I'm inclined to think that I am a failure. What, what are, what are we, it's all right to beat up people if they start to fight? I think it's okay to take something without asking. It is important to be honest with your parents, even if they become upset. I think sometimes it's okay to cheat at school. What I'm saying to you is this, is that children, and I'm not here as a psychiatrist, I'm not here as a psychologist, I'm not here as a mental health professional, but I am here with over 20 years in the background of being in law enforcement. And I am here as a parent and I am here as a, as, as a county commissioner that I have a right and a duty to the residents of this county and I have a right and a duty to the people that have been calling my phone constantly, showing up at my door, leaving me three notes at the house yesterday when I got home and finding them on my door when I got home from the Mental Health building, uh, meeting last night. But more than, more than that, what was disturbing is, as I'm sitting in this Mental Health Board meeting, the Mental Health Board, that this board is responsible to put, putting eight of the six people on, were never given a copy of this, of this survey. They were never shown this survey. When, when, when I, when, when this issue was brought up, I asked, "Have you seen the survey?" One member on that board says, "No, I haven't and I really don't wanna see it." I told him to step outside and resign because if that's what his position is, then that's, that's not what we want for a board member. We are entrusting in that board to do this. Fortunately enough, and, and a pat on the back to the commissioners that are currently sitting on this board, two of the, two of the newest members of that board identified that there was a problem. And we're able to start to take some action to be able to, to, to put the forward press of trying to get this stopped.
This is incredible.
This is ridiculous and, and I wanna leave this with, with, with this, with this word here. When I called for Jim Adams resignation for all the problems that he had with, with, with the dollars and cents was very minimal to the point of that man continuing to push this type of, of garbage into our schools. And I'll take it one step further. I spent almost an hour and a half yesterday afternoon on a conference call with the creator of this exam out of Georgia, okay? And you know what the end result was?
What?
The end result is, is that they do this to receive grant money. The worse the results are, the more money they get. And, and, and the creator of this himself, I believe his name was Leighton, the, the, the creator himself said, "This is a money grab survey so that they can gauge how much more money they can get from grants." I also have an email from an individual from the Board of Mental Health, not from the board, but rather from one of the employees, that clearly states in there that the reason, the primary reason for this is to receive grants, to utilize to receive grants. If we are poisoning our kids to receive grants, we need to get our priorities straight. Mental health needs to get their priorities straight. The Board of Mental Health needs to get their priorities straight of, of a director that is, that is putting this garbage into the hands of our students. And I'll take it even one step further. You know what the waiver is for this? When the kids get a waiver, it is, it is so, it is so manipulative, the, the parents would, when, when-
Kids can opt out.
Kids can opt out of this.
The parents can opt out.
The parents can opt out for their parents. But they have to send in a, a signature to say they don't want their kid to take this. If that kid never sends the, never gets the paperwork or the parents don't receive that, guess what? Your kid is taking that survey because they don't have a paper. How about turning it around to the point that says, "You have to have consent to take a survey." I don't agree with this survey to begin with, but I'm saying this is, is this is all underhanded, undermining tactics. And at the end of the day, our kids are being poisoned with this stuff. And more than anything, our parents are being swindled to, to, and their kids are going to school and experiencing this. So with that being said, I've, I've drafted a letter and it says, "Dear Mr. Student from Director of Jobs and Family Services."
Who's Mr. Student?
He's the director from Job, Greg Student.
Greg is?
Greg, I'm sorry.
It's not Student, Craig.
Swenson, Craig Swenson.
Oh, I think you gotta change that name there.
I'll change that. Craig Swenson, yeah. Craig Swenson from the Director of Jobs and Family Services. "The survey for the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students that, that the Giaga County Mental Health Board is checking to disseminate to Giaga County schools is extremely problematic and raises serious concerns. While many Giaga County law enforcement, juvenile judge and prosecutors are fighting to limit the juvenile drug use in our county, this survey suggests and provides a roadmap to fourth, fifth, and sixth graders with respect to dangerous and unlawful drug activities. It is highly unlikely that the fourth to sixth graders know about huffing aerosol or sniffing glue, yet the survey introduces these young students to such illicit and dangerous activities. Because of youthful curiosity, it is likely that some of the students introduced to such illicit activities will pursue glue sniffing and huffing, essentially expanding the already growing youth drug problem. Why would our county Mental Health Board introduce our youth to other means of dangerous drug use in our, in a survey? The survey also contains questions that introduce on private parent-child relationships of our county residents. For what purpose? There's a number of these in there of, of, of personal issues."
Well, I would wonder that, that the health thing would be, you know, an outright, you're not supposed to find out.
Exactly. The confidentiality of the survey is also suspect. While the student does not place his or her name on the survey-
Many of these questions you can't ask unless you're asking, unless you have a parent presence and the parent's given permission.
Correct.
Because some of this stuff is admitting that you're breaking the law. "I smoke marijuana."
That HIPAA law would be violated.
You can't do anything. That's not HIPAA. That has to do with the, with the, the law of having a minor-
A minor ask, answer questions.
Asked questions outside of the parent without the parent's involvement or the parent's awareness.
You know, this adds-
And so this, this is, this, this document, I believe, is child abuse.
So it says here, "The confidentiality of the survey is also suspect while the student does not place his or her name on the survey. Each survey is individually numbered at the bottom. If someone maintained a list as to which student is given a specific numbered survey. The waiver process for parents is also seriously flawed. Parent must take affirmative action to preclude their children's participation in the service or the survey. Some children may not have even taken the waiver home. According to Mental Health, they put for postage, sent stamps for them to mail it. If they didn't get it in the mail, their kid is gonna be taking this. At a minimum, the survey process should be carefully explained to all parents and a signed permission slip signed by a parent should be a mandatory prerequisite before a student takes the survey." Finally, "The survey contains some questions that invade the privacy of parents' homes and have no academic purpose. For example, an inquiry into a parent's gun ownership or the number of guns in a home is way out of bounds and smacked of some illicit government motive, governmental motive. The right of gun ownership is protected constitutional. Neither our schools nor the county Mental Health Board have any right to the private gun ownership information. Moreover, using our children to obtain such information on their parents for some highly questionable government or sociological purpose is just plain wrong. Apparently, the main purpose of the survey is for use to pursue grant or other funding. Our students should not be manipulated and our families' privacies invaded for government economic purposes. I was appalled to have attended the meeting on the 10th of December to learn that none of the board members had seen or read the survey and that the survey was put out without their approval and just handled directly from the director and his staff. I strongly urge the board to review the conduct of the director and feel that fast and firm action is taken to put fail safes and policies in place to control the aggressive and- to control the aggressive and potentially illegal and liable actions that his decisions are putting our county in. Furthermore, the concern goes way beyond liability, but rather child safety and welfare. In light of these problems, I respectfully demand that all efforts to distribute the survey to the Georgia students cease immediately. The proper procedure should have included a committee consisting of representatives of our schools, parent-teacher organizations, jobs and family services, juvenile court, and other youth involved groups to review this survey and survey process so that the rights of parents and students in our county adequately protected. I take a strong stand on this horrific and irresponsible action of putting out this survey, and I refuse to sit on my hands and allow our children to be poisoned by such material. I have a duty to the people of this county in this position. I hold and officially move to formally request the Director of Jobs and Family Services accept this letter as an official complaint and ask that investigation be open to uncover the safety and welfare that the Director of Mental Health, Mr. Jim Adams, has put the children and families at risk. Respectfully, Ralph Spitalary." So with that, I ask that, you know,
I have one question.
To join on with this situation?
Yeah, I would like to join in, but I have a question. And I don't know if this is about a naivety or what. Okay. And I ask all of you to think with me. When you were younger, and you're gonna have to go back to the time when you were in, when I was in fourth grade, I was eight years old. And I'm gonna tell you, when I was eight years old, I don't, when I'm reading this, I didn't know what any of that meant.
Exactly.
I don't even know if I understood a lot about life at that time. And I'm gonna tell you honestly. You know, maybe, but at the time you reached junior high, you started to understand a few things, or you learned a few things. And this is my question. I am not a mental health professional, and I am not a teacher in the lower grades. How much do our children know today in response to what we knew? I mean, I've watched the commercials, and I am horrified. There was one commercial in particular I couldn't believe. I mean, I wouldn't even know what all that stuff meant. But that is being hit with our kids. How much do our eight and nine and ten-year-olds do know? I mean, you know, I don't want to sound like I, I really don't know unless I sat down and asked them. But, you know, to put this, like, I think Ralph's got a point here. You know, when you tell a kid that the Christmas presents are in the kitchens, underneath the kitchen sink, or they're in the back porch locked up, that's where my mother used to put them, and I knew they were there. I mean, I walked in the porch, that's the way I got into the house. And the packages were all there. So what did you do? You opened them. And when Christmas morning came, it was, "Oh, I saw this already." You know, but I mean, that's a simplistic point of view, but I got to agree with you, Ralph. I mean, if my child or my grandchild came home with this, I'd be horrified.
Well, and the biggest thing is, is the concealed, the concealed position-
I don't think that's anybody's position.
Hidden agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, there was, there was a, you know, in history, there was a man in history that got a hold of where all the guns in the country were. And when it came time to take over that nation, he found out where they all were, and he took those guns away from those people. And they couldn't even protect themselves, and you all know who that was. And Hitler, Hitler had it down-
If you don't, if you don't mind, I was at the meeting last night, and by the way,
This is upsetting.
Ralph's letter was very good, and his approach I fully endorse. Somebody needs to look into this because if we're gonna, the thing that stunned me the most about being at the board meeting last night
I mean, who put this?
Was that the board was supposed to be overseeing. We appoint board members, and thank God we appointed two good board members who are willing to step up to the situation. But the board is supposed to be providing oversight to Jim Adams and others. The attitude that was expressed was one of arrogance. And we brought these up, and we brought reasonable questions to the table.
Well, that's why my question is, how much do our young kids know? How much, are we naive to understand that they're not as moxie and they're-
But that's, that's an immaterial question relative to what Ralph was pointing out because if that were the case, if in fact we're trying to survey to find out where our kids are, then that survey should not be given to us through a federal organization who has an agenda we don't understand.
They should come to the parents.
And it should be driven and guided by professionals in this county who understand what our unique issues are. The motivation for doing this was not to help our kids. And that question was asked last night, and I asked that question. The motivation was something else. Because the mental health board's charge is not to go out there and fix our schools. It's a different charge, it's a different agenda.
I would think the schools would.
And so, you know, there's a lot of questions that need to be asked about this. And I applaud Mr. Spitalary for raising this and getting this conversation going. I mean, there were a number of citizens at the meeting last night, it was a short notice kind of a thing.
I didn't even know about this.
And so, a number of us attended.
I mean, I didn't know about this.
I got hammered yesterday.
I mean, I can't imagine.
It was stunning, the lack of professionalism that I saw exhibited at that board last night. It was, it was just stunning.
Well, like I said, I think it's important to understand, you know, are they, you know, is this is all about money-based? Or is this about an issue that they see that's so constantly up and that we're just out of touch with reality?
Yesterday, the founder of this was asked. And the question came up is that, "Why would we not put together a survey based on positive values?"
Right.
And he said, "I would, we would never be able to make money. I would never be able to make money doing that." He says, and he even agreed on the conversation. He says, "I agree that that would probably be the better, the better approach, but we would never be able to sell that." You know, nobody wants to read good news. They want to read bad news. And unfortunately, what he's basically saying is, "Let's poison these kids so I could get fat and rich."
That's what they're doing, is they're poisoning their minds with information that they really don't need to have.
Absolutely.
You know, asking questions concerning-
Well, if you want your children to have understanding, you want it to be brought to them in a way that they understand that the negativities of drug use, the negativities of these kinds of things. But, you know, their principles and the way they believe in, I mean, why do you send your child where you send them? Because you're looking for value today.
This destroys that naivety. A young person's mind is not prepared.
It's not ready.
It has not reached the level yet where it can even understand some of these concepts. And by the way, the results, one of the comments made last night was, "Well, we are gauging how our county is doing based on the results for this." Well, if you read the test, you've got a copy of the test. Do you, which student do you think is going to be honest on that test? "Yeah, I smoke marijuana." And so, can you trust the results of the test based on the design of the test? There's so many flaws in this whole survey process that, again, it is something we need to deal with, and I applaud Ralph for bringing this up.
And I just, I think that once again, we need to call for action. We need to get the media to take a stand on this. We need the people to be able to finally, once and for all, get to the point that we get to the source, we get to the bottom of this, of getting final control of an organization that has been out of control, continues to be out of control, and how many prices of lives and how many prices of potential dangers do we have to continue to put our kids in before something else changes? And I'm not one to sit here and just wait for the next, for the next incident to happen in one of our schools, or the next child to die of an overdose because of the fact that at fifth grade, he's, he's taken the survey, that all of a sudden, he gets home from school and runs up to the medicine cabinet and says, "I wonder what this will make me feel like if I eat all these blue pills, or green pills, or yellow pills? What's that gonna do to, do we need, do we need that to finally take a change? Or do we need to be proactive?" And it's, and it's, we have a responsibility as parents. We have a responsibility as public officials. We have a responsibility as a, as a, as a human society to stop this. And it's got to stop. Ms. Jones?
Sadly, about six weeks ago, there was a very excellent, poorly attended seminar put on by a federal agent named Hill, and I can't remember-
Who was it?
Robert Hill. And we expected, it was sponsored by Ravenwood. We expected it to be packed. And there was nobody. There were a handful of people that attended it, and it was very, very informative from the standpoint that it indicated the unwitting dangers of prescription drugs that parents do have around. And the statement was made, and this is an agent who, he stayed over an hour and a half, past his time, to answer questions from the few that were there. And the stipulation was that there are more deaths from prescription drugs that are not prescribed than from any other cause, including the heroin problem. And so, I think that there should be a recognition that there is a problem. But the conversation has to start back down at the household level. And it was absolutely unacceptable that with all the tables that were set up at Notre Dame, there were perhaps twenty people in attendance, including some trustees from other Georgia counties. So the recognition has to be there, that we-
Did they actually give these surveys out already?
From what I understand, they called us out there.
SG has already completed them, they're sending it to the-
No, SG is supposed to start this Monday.
So they've given it to all seven schools?
And Berkshire is supposed to start on Friday, and Cardinal is supposed to start next week.
Now, as a result of the intervention at last night's meeting, that process has been interrupted, correct?
Well, and I can tell you this, I was pretty disturbed at the fact of the, you know, let's just go around the question five times. I will do my best to try to, to try to make contact with the people. No. If you're the one that is mandating that this test is supposed to be taken, then you call these schools and you tell them, "Until further notice, all of this is supposed, is stopped." And my position is, is I'm going to get this, and I apologize for the, for the thing.
Well, I would like to handle this.
From when we had that, Craig was in my thing from Water Resources.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's Craig Swenson who's going to receive this. I'm gonna have a conversation with him. But if he feels the need that he wants me to, or if he feels the need to go to it, to even go as far as to get to a judge to have a court order issued to stop this, it needs to stop. And there are many, many, many issues in this that are 100% just poison. And the fact of the matter is, is in my, in my time here, I was not serving on this board when this test occurred three years ago. Every three years is when they do these tests.
I've never seen this.
And my position is, is that this is, this is bad. Parents, and I guess I call to the media on this, is that the media needs to be able to put some of this information out there so that people, when parents see these questions, parents have no idea. They don't even make it available. And it says in the form to call Linda Miller at the Board of Mental Health. You know what she tells you? You'll have to, we don't, we don't give out copies. They're very elusive around that whole thing. You have to go to the school and look at the test. They don't give it to you. So as busy as people's schedules are, as hard as sometimes it is with all the different events with kids and this and that, all this other stuff going on, you're to take, you know, that is their direct point, is to basically tell you to go to school. So you have to try to figure all this out on your own. The way that this is put in, it smells, it stinks, I don't like it. They basically put this in there in the most deceitful way possible to basically trick parents, and I'm not gonna stand for it. This is wrong, and it's wrong. That's it. Okay, I did not.
I talked to Matt Golemo, I'd like to go to talk to Matt about it because he's a super superintendent, and then from there work down to the other seven superintendents.
I know, I was looking to see if it was Carver's there.
They do have power over the schools. I mean, they have-
And the problem, the thing that I'm not gonna sit there and listen to this, to this, you know, fantasy, fantasy land, you know, hypothetical statistical nonsense that Mr. Adams wants to, wants to try to basically, you know, that's great for Star Trek. We're talking about our kids. And all of your results and all of your statistical information and data that you're talking about, this, that's got nothing to do with what our point is here. Our point is, "We don't like this, we want it stopped." I would not have gotten bombarded with all the questions, and people don't know where to go. There's a feeling of distrust, there's a feeling of just, everybody is kind of all intermingled. Nobody wants to take the unpopular position and expose this. Nobody wants to go out on a limb and put this problem out there. I have no issues with that. What's right is right, and what's wrong is wrong. And this is wrong. And these parents have to be able to have a spot, that they can have a voice in this. And this is, and for our administrators to be able to think that this is right, and when you talk to the owner of this company, and I ask anybody to give him a call, when he can basically sit there and say, "It's all about the money," at the end of the day, we're basically selling our kids.
Well, I think it's inappropriate, obviously it's inappropriate. And if they wanted to take a survey, they should have discussed it with the superintendents, and they should have then spoke to the families and sent letters to the families, discussed it with them before they ever started in this. And I have to agree with you. I would be terribly upset if my grandchildren got this, and they are at the age like your daughter.
So, question, do the local Board of Educations get to review this before they, these are issued to the students?
Yeah, I would go there.
Supposedly, according to the question was asked last night, and they said that the boards all approved of this. All the Board of Educations were 100% made aware of this. Everybody was on board with this, that this wasn't something that they just basically sent to the school. Then, you know, the whole part of the steps, the stamps were sent to them to be able to disperse-
You know, I'm gonna check that, you know, this is like, okay. Then again, I go back in my own experience, we never had sex education at school. And I know a friend of mine who teaches fifth grade.
It just wasn't a formal class, is what you're saying.
Well, you're right, we learned it, yeah, right.
It's like a vocational thing.
Now, wait, now, let me, I have a friend who is a fifth grade teacher, and she told me she taught that. You know, now, there's a way of teaching it, and there's a way of teaching it. But there's some places that really get into things that you don't want to, you know, aren't appropriate. I think that's where this has gone. This has gone there.
So if these tests, this particular test has been administered before?
I've never seen it.
I mean, that would be an important-
Yeah, it has been, it has been.
The exact kind of test?
Yep.
The exact kind-
The same grade level, what grades?
The same level, the same-
We haven't seen the patterns.
Six to twelve, six to twelve graders.
Well, this is four to six. This is, you said forty-six.
There's actually, from what I, from what I talked to a parent from Berkshire, she told me this morning that her daughter is going to be taking a test that in a variable form than this. And it just, I, that's, this is the reason I was late today, I was working on this. I had this phone call that I couldn't let go of. She was, you know, explaining to me that there's a different test, similar type, with a different format of questions. I haven't been able to confirm that or deny that.
Well, if this went to a high school kid.
Fourth and fifth, but this is here, is from six to twelve.
Oh, this is six to twelve?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a little different.
Okay, but the problem for me is, is this has been going on, all right? How many parents did not know about it? How many kids did not come home and communicate that idea? And not all kids do. But if it's been going on, and this is a regular part of the curriculum, then the problem does rest with Boards of Education.
It's Boards of Education.
When your mental health board had no idea that this was going on, I have a feeling that there was probably other Board of Education, not to throw them under the bus. Because I don't think that they probably knew about, know about it either.
They didn't read it, they just took it and-
Well, I'm gonna talk to Matt Golemo and the other superintendents. I want to, I want to go right to where these are the people responsible.
The bottom line is this, is we need to get a new director in mental health, and I don't have a problem saying that point blank. And I really don't care what people think about that. about that, it comes down to is, is we need a new director that, that, that starts to, starts to, stops to try to be dictatorial as far as, as, as taking this stuff and, and basically, beyond his board, of putting this garbage out there, his board had no idea. And I, I would have a real problem sitting on a board that I've gotta listen, my, my feeling is this, if the dog bites you the first time, it's the dog's fault, second time, it's yours. If they, if he failed to advise them of something of this nature, and something as crazy as, as that, what else is he not telling them? You know, what else is he not telling them?
Well, I wanna find out from the Board of Education, I definitely do, definitely.
It's just, I mean, you know, it's just, it's, it's, it's crazy, we, we have to trust our people in our positions of, of trust. If we, if we have people that we can't trust in positions of trust, we have an absolute destruction of society, bottom line. And I'm not some black helicopter in the sky, theory, you know, conspiracy guy, I'm just telling you, it's just ABCs of everyday life. You've gotta be able to trust the person in that seat. And if the board there had no idea of this, this information, how could, how, how could they trust him on anything he says? You know, it's ridiculous, it's a joke.
Well, I, I wanna see, I wanna see the survey for the fourth graders. I wanna know exactly what they did with this, and what exactly happened after that. Get all the, unbelievable.
I think it's great you brought this to everyone's attention.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and Boards of Education rotate too, you know, they change constantly.
Yeah, but we've had the same, we've had the same superintendents, though. They've been in place for many, many years, 'cause I know that, I mean, other than Jane Hayman leaving, okay, and then the new Barry Guy left there for, I mean, they may have different ones, DeLong's been there, you know, I remember, and I know Matt Golemo's been there for at least seventeen...
And look at the, and look at the survey, by the way, just as a little side note, look, there's a little asterisk, I think it's on the first page, it talks about that this test is part of the Common Core investigation, whatever standards, to implement Common Core. So this just tells you, and if our schools are in favor of that, we have issues, and we need to be talking to our superintendents and our, and our, and our boards, and finding, discovering where they're at on this stuff.
And actually, those results should be tabulated and available.
And I understand that, but I, we're taxpayers.
I know, I know.
I pay taxes, you pay taxes.
Exactly, and I've been paying for these schools for years.
And I pay for private school. But I should have a say also, because the same people that are going to those private schools still have influence on my child that I'm sending to a private school.
Oh, yeah, because it's a society, and it happens in the community.
Well, if this is administered every three years, we should be able to get...
The other ones.
Results.
They do, they, they, they have the results, and, and it was a big song and dance that they're saying, "Well, drug, drugs have gone down, and, and all this stuff has gone down." And there are all these, okay, so we had the worst epidemic of, of heroin that we had last year, the highest record number of deaths last year, so at the end of the day, your, your results, just based on just the fatality rate, is skewed. You know, we, we don't have all the issues that we have in Sheridan High School with the, with, with, with the amount of drugs that are being done. Within that, within the last three years, we had a Sheridan, Sheridan School shooting where kids died. So at the end of the day, their results of what they're trying to say have gone down? How, how about this? How about all these questions here of basically continuously implementing carrying guns in schools? Could that have been a direct correlation to potentially something that, that, that happened in this county? And I'm not here to, 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 to throw, throw, throw bullets out there to say this, or this, or this, but at the end of the day, it's, it comes down to is, what else did something like this spark in the curiosity of a child's mind to be able to do this? To be able to possibly take an act on, on what, what he's reading in something like this?
But as, as far as violence and things, I mean, you go back in history, and you go back just to the nineteenth century, turn of the century, it was pretty violent, everyone had guns, and they're all killing each other, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't like, I mean...
This is nothing new.
There is nothing new under the sun. Violence has been in place, you go back to fifteenth, sixteenth century, and you can look at the Tudor Dynasty, I mean, they didn't even waste time, they just chopped everybody's heads off. I mean, arrogance and, and cruelty has been with us. We've seen it with Stalin, we've seen it with Motsi-Tung, we've seen it with Hitler, we've seen it with all of these, these, these people that were vicious, and they did horrible things to people. Stalin was the worst. And, you know, Patton wanted to go in and take him right out, but what did we do? Oh, no, let's not do that. So what happened? Russia just got stronger.
And it's been an issue in schools for the last twenty years since then.
It's been bad.
Well, and one more thing that I could add...
And we try to protect our children, obviously, we are a very conservative community, we wanna protect our children, we want the best for them. And this, this incites you, that's why you're angry, Ralph, you're very conservative, you know, we are conservative, we don't want bad things to happen to our kids, unfortunately.
Well, and, and, and one other thing too, is, is I had a conversation actually with a, with a newer member from one of the school boards that had called me.
Yeah.
And she basically told me, she said, "I've been getting a lot of these calls, I'm turning to you because I don't know where to go with this." But she basically said, she says, she's in a position where, you know, she doesn't know how to, how, how to, how to basically go the other route. It's just basically, you know, public opinion of just, everybody else is just gonna go along with it, so everybody else just goes along with it. My, my direct contact to her was to say, "You've gotta do what's right." You know, and I understand, it's, it's not always comfortable, it's not comfortable to be in, in, in this position to, to call somebody out on stuff like this, but at the end of the day, it's the right thing to do. And, and the problem is, is like, you know, Mary knows some people, Dave, you know some people on those school boards, but the fact of, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that some, sometimes, they just don't want to go against the, against the grain, and they just say yes, you know? And, and I, I strongly doubt that a lot of these parents even saw these questions.
Yeah.
So, so with that, Christine, we need to make a motion on, and I apologize, Hattie, 'cause I did make a motion on your budget here, but...
Yeah, I'll second, oh, you've got to...
Yeah, and I, a motion, and Mary seconds, and...
Mr. Sweetie?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
And I, motion is approved, so. I appreciate everybody's time here, I know it's gone longer than twelve o'clock.
Well, I'd go with you, but I'm gonna have to change the language a little bit, and put rees and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, are you gonna continue?
Oh, you wanna do the acknowledgements? Let me see here. All right, so for the acknowledgements, what we're gonna have is the monthly financial report for the County Building Department for the month of November two thousand fourteen, a weekly report filed by the Dog Ward for all dogs seized and pounded, redeemed, or destroyed for the weekend in November twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen. Then we have probation services fund, vendor fees, report filed by Court of Common Pleas, intensive supervision probation, pre-trial release services pursuant O R C two-nine-five-one-zero-two-one. Then the monthly report was filed by Young County Sheriff's Office of an account of expense for the inmate meals for the month ending November fourteenth, or two thousand fourteen. For the meetings, Friday tomorrow, NOAC finance and audit, eight-thirty, governance, nine-thirty, executive at ten-thirty.
The executive is not gonna be that day, it'll either be Monday, two, or it'll be the twenty-second, two, we haven't decided yet, because I, I have somewhere else to go, I can't do it today.
Okay.
So that'll be changed, I'll let you know what day it's...
But the other two are good?
Yeah, they're all good, it's just that they go long too long, and I can't be there till two o'clock in the afternoon.
So then on Monday, the fifteenth, Family First Council, two P M. at Mental Health, the sixteenth is the Advancement Advisory Board, nine forty-five, and here, the sixteenth, the Commissioners will hold regular session, the sixteenth, Georgia Trumbull Solid Waste Management District Board Directors, twelve-thirty P M. at Welsh Build-In. On the twenty-third, the Commissioners will hold regular session, beginning with a public viewing at six A M. for the proposed...
Come on, you!
Nine A M. for the proposed dedication of existing undedicated extension of Stillwater Drive in Russell Township.
You do that one more time, we're gonna think you're dyslexic.
Hey, this is like that survey, you hear it enough? You sniff and glue by the time you leave here. So, on the twenty-fifth, the county offices will only open until twelve, after the Commissioners meeting at ten. On the twenty-sixth, the county offices, under the Higher Authority Board of Commissioners, will be closed for general business, twenty-four hour operation will continue to operate as usual. The thirtieth, the Commissioners will hold regular session with a public hearing at ten-thirty A M. for the proposed dedication of the existing undedicated extension of Stillwater Drive in Russell Township. And on the first, the county office will be closed for general business due to the New Year's Day holiday, twenty-four operations will still continue, and regular Commissioners meeting is closed.
All right, I'll make a motion to a jury.
Second that. David, I'm gonna have Debbie, I sent her that, so I gotta have her change a couple of those things in there, okay?
To make it really easy, rather than I, and I didn't go to the meeting, so...
Yep, we'll take care of it.
Maybe make it sound more...